All right, I will call the Buckingham County Planning Commission Work Session to order. Please stand as Commissioner Doria will lead us in invocation and Commissioner Cruz in our place of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we ask you to be with us tonight, please, the Planning Commission and have a good meeting here tonight. God direct us, Lord, and look earth for us as we have safe passage home. We ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh.
Thank you, Commissioner. That brings us to establish a quorum. We have six of eight, so we do have a quorum. Nicky, any change to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Still moved.
Have a motion to second in the discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous, Nicky. That brings our discussion topics, Comprehensive Plan. Todd, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Okay, so we're going to go over this real quickly. We brought back some changes to draft Sections three and four of the comp plan. It has been brought to my attention, just about back up for a second, page thirty-four, second paragraph, discussing the household, where it says, "This section will examine housing in Buckingham County by top quality vacancy rate and household characteristics such as household size and race." It's been brought to my attention that those last two words, "and race," should be struck. Is the commission okay with that? It's page thirty-four, second paragraph, first sentence.
My screen is not moving. No, the screen is not moving because we haven't really started the discussion. As Todd talks, I think we're in draft Section three?
Three, correct.
And this is draft Section three. We just haven't started the discussion. And the second paragraph, which is on your screen, can you? It's the second paragraph to which you're referring.
First sentence, yeah. So it's been brought to my attention, those last two words in the first sentence, "and race," should be struck. I wanted to get the commission's take on that, concurrence, agreement, disagreement. You're okay with that?
Everybody sends us all right in agreement?
Right. Okay, so we'll strike that. I'll make a note of that. The only other changes I've got in draft Section three are in pages sixty-three and sixty-four. I'll give everybody time to catch up. Nice to know I'm not the only person who deals with technical difficulties.
Sixty-three?
Yeah, right there, we added that sentence at the top of the page. According to the 2022 USDA Agricultural Census, the acreage of farmland is estimated to cover twenty-one point eight percent of Buckingham County. That sentence was added since last time.
I figured it would be more than that. Would a forest land is not considered agriculture?
I don't believe it is for these purposes, no.
Okay, because to get all the breaks, agriculture, I was just wondering, like warehouses, what, fifty thousand acres in Buckingham County now?
They were.
Yeah.
I don't believe it is, but I can ask Lauren to double check that. Then on the very next page, sixty-four, you'll see a brand-new sentence, or sorry, a brand-new paragraph, rather. This actually, what you see there, the poultry cooperative, basically happened within the last couple of months. And this is in response to Tyson Foods announcing last year they were closing their Glen Allen Processing Facility, which threatened to put over two hundred former own production houses out of business. So we put this paragraph in to explain the cooperative, why it was formed, and also that this cooperative, there's a contract with an Indiana-based company to buy the eggs from these poultry houses. So I'll give you a chance to peruse that paragraph, see if you have any questions or concerns about that. I don't know if we have those numbers. I can, we can check on that. You're talking about the economic impact from the new agreement with the Dutch Country Organics, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I didn't know if they had any kind of.
Okay, we can check and see. Now, I believe the only other change I made to draft Section three was map seventeen, the mining sites. Last month, there was concern that the dots were really big, and it was kind of a jumbled mess, so I made the dots smaller to hopefully make this map easier to read.
Not on this particular map, but there were a couple of things that I noticed when I went through them, but I didn't write the pages down.
I'll tell you what, do you have my email address or Tyler's email address? If not, you can get them through Nicky.
I don't know, but under the hospitals, whatever section that was, I didn't see VCU Health System, VCU slash MCV.
Hold on, I gotta go find the right page. And I know we tried to keep that list confined to hospitals within a certain distance, which would be why that hospital is not listed, and honestly, is that?
If you list in Henrico Doctors under there.
It's, I see, it's on page thirty-nine.
Children's Tower is right downtown.
Right.
But you got Henrico Doctors, so I don't know why.
Well, it could be, probably what happened is Henrico Doctors probably has a location out in Henrico, west of Richmond, which would put it within sixty miles, but if you think that's wrong, we can double check that.
Oh, would you please double check that? And I was checking the, and I was just checking by the drive time that was listed on some of them.
I'll make a note of that.
And mind you, the drive time came from my house.
Right.
So I don't know where, if this is calculated from the courthouse to the hospitals, or from the edge, Buckingham County?
Yeah, no, it's from, it's supposed to be from the county line, so we'll double check those.
Oh, if it's on the county line, okay.
Yeah.
And along with that, check JSarge rentals and the school colleges.
What page is that? Do you remember?
I didn't write down the pages.
Okay, let's see.
Because there's JSarge, there was something listed in, JSarge is not in Matlothian. But I was looking at, also, there's some community colleges called Bright Point now, and one is on Charter Colony in Matlothian.
That may be the school formerly known as John Tyler, is that the school formerly known as John Tyler Community College?
Yes.
It is Bright Point.
Yeah, they changed the name.
Okay. Anything else?
I have control of the screen, but under the recreation places, parks, there was something where you had Ellis Acres, where Ellis Acres, Buckingham Training School was not listed. And I'm not sure specifically, there was a list of, oh. And where do you get the listing of civic organizations?
I'm sorry, now, I do, under the historic sites, I do have the Ellis Acres Park noted as the site of the Buckingham Training School. We don't have it noted under recreation.
Okay, back, right in there, Cottage, what's in education?
A map of historic.
Of historic.
And this map's not meant to be all-inclusive.
It wasn't meant to be.
Not to be, because if it was all-inclusive, it would be probably more than you could read in a single map. I was trying to get the more important ones.
Okay. And the civic organizations, where did you get the listing from?
I got, we got that listing from a combination of the county website and speaking with county staff, and again, this is not meant to be all-inclusive, just to catch some of the highlights. And we also did, in reviewing the previous comp plan, we probably pulled some of that from the previous comp plan as well.
Then I'm going to go back and check the other, check my notes and check the website.
Okay.
My only, and just glancing at that, I knew that VCU, MCV wasn't listed in the hospitals because that's where I worked.
Okay.
Okay, and the Children's Pavilion, Children's Tower in that area, I worked there. And by the same token, if all of the, if I'm looking, thinking about Ellis Acres and predominantly African-American sites that are not included in this comp plan, okay, I just want to be sure that the representation is there. And that's how I noticed the Ellis, I was asking about the Ellis Acres and Buckingham Training School.
Okay, so, so again, on the map, historic sites, we do denote Ellis Acres as being the site of the Buckingham Training School. Are you concerned that under the recreation, it should be denoted there as well? Is that your concern?
Because that park is also well-used, and so that's my concern, is I just, I didn't know where the, where the representation came from, and that's why I asked where you got your information. And if it's going back to the county website, which is your source of information, then I need to go back to that.
Well, that's not my sole, that's not our sole source.
Okay.
But, but again, when talking about the Buckingham Training School, there's, there was, we also pulled, that map, we also pulled that from Department Historic Resources.
Right.
As well as consulting with county staff to get that information and other sources as available. So it's not just one source, but now, if you have specific concerns about the way it's denoted in the plan, we can address those.
I will, but, and just as, just a point, that Civil Rights and Education Heritage Trail, I wrote the one for the school, and so when that was first open, I was on the board and helped write up and plan that, so I'm familiar with it, so that's what I'm saying.
Are you talking about page fifty-four, where we talk about, where we talk about the Civil Rights and Education Heritage Trail?
When that was launched, I was a part of that being launched. Okay. What I'm saying is, I don't have the pages and I don't have control of mine.
I see. No, that's the reason, the reason I bring it up is because on page fifty-four, where we talk about that Civil Rights and Education Heritage Trail, actually lists brief bullet points on the three sites, three stops in Buckingham County. Now, if you want more information than what I have there, please let us know.
Oh, I will, but I just want to consistently repeat it as necessary, if it's, if it's, if it's a park, a site, and then it's listed as a historic site, I just wanted it to be consistent. But again, I have to, I was going to go back and check the source and look at the pages because I don't have, I didn't write down the page numbers. I wrote down the items that I was thinking about, so I want to go back and check my sources. Okay, those were the things that I had. Yeah, those were the things that I had.
Okay, and I will note, I mean, other sources, with Ellis Acres, I'd have to go back and check, that we probably went to the Town and Dillon website, and I believe there's also a website for Ellis Acres, if I'm not mistaken, so it's from a variety of sources.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for the commissioners?
Okay, if not, the, that's all I had on draft Section three. On draft Section four, if you want, I'll wait for you to pull it up if you want. Okay, so basically, the only changes I made there, starting on page ninety-four, where I've got map twenty-five, the current level of service, and remember, this is VDOT data, so keep that in mind. So what I did was I created additional maps, twenty-five A through twenty-five D, to break the county into quadrants, to give you a better view of what that looks like. And I did the same thing with map twenty-six, I created twenty-six A through twenty-six D, and then basically, if you go all the way through map twenty-seven, did the same thing, and map twenty-eight did the same thing. So basically, it's pages ninety-five through one thirteen, I basically just added extra maps to divide the county into quadrants for those data sets, to hopefully give you a clearer view of what you're looking at. Okay.
Yeah, it's larger, you get more readable. I think that was a good idea.
Those are the only changes to draft Section four. If we have nothing else, at this point, I want to ask Tyler to come up to go over the changes he made to the citizen survey summary report.
All right, so there weren't too many changes that I made. The biggest one was, consistent one across the figures, was to add a vertical access, vertical axis label, to help make it clear what the numbers represent on each of the figures.
Which page is that?
It starts on page six. So on the left side, it says number of responses now, and that's consistent across the different figures, so there'll be an axis label there. Another change was, actually, on page six, too, I took out the last sentence that talked about the representation of the broader population, and just kept it with the margin For most of the figures, the axis is number of responses. I'm trying to look, I think there were a few, or at least one that was something else. For figure fifteen on page twenty-five, it's percentage of responses instead, so for each of those areas, the size of the bar represents the percentage of responses from that area, so it adds up to one for each of the bars. Then below that, it's just number of responses across all the different areas combined. Any questions on figure fifteen? Because I think that is the most complicated figure in the.
Last time you were here, you said that some people had voted twelve times?
I, that was not me, that's, I think somebody did mention that they saw on Facebook, maybe, that somebody had taken the survey multiple times.
I didn't know if you could see that on your end, and.
There was, there was really no way for us to track that. We could look for similar patterns and responses to see if they, you know, certain number of surveys were taken with the same exact responses, to see if there was any type of evidence of faking or any type of survey.
I thought.
But then no one, they were not given a unique ID or anything like that, and they weren't required to put an email address or anything like that.
Care of my next questions.
Other than that page, I think most of them are just number of responses. Any, any other questions about any of the information?
Any questions or comments from the commissioners? I will say by putting it on the, that really clarified it.
Okay.
You got the X axis and the Y.
Mm-hmm.
As to what you exactly look at that.
Yeah, it's been small, but I think each time it's gotten a little bit better. Hand it back to Todd.
Thank you, Tyler. So, real quick, this, one last thing before I let you all go, I did not get a chance to work on the future land use map, unfortunately. Time got in the way. But just recap, last month, what the group decided, my understanding was to keep the growth areas in place and create growth corridors along all the major routes, fifteen, sixty, fifty-six, twenty, and twenty-four, from what I, that's what I have in my notes. So if anybody remembers it differently, please let us know. Hopefully, staff will be working on that in the last, in the next month or so. I did want to bring a question to the group, because I also got the impression they wanted to leave the growth areas intact, because I did know from the survey responses, there were quite a few people, quite a large percentage, had said no growth in the Yogaville area, and a slightly smaller percentage said no growth in the Buckingham Courthouse area. But if the group wants to go ahead and keep those growth areas intact, we will do that.
What's the consensus? I, Buckingham Courthouse, I think.
Yeah, I'm referring to page twenty-five of the citizen survey summary, figure fifteen, which Tyler just referred to.
I think Yogaville's response, if I recall, was because they felt like they'd already developed about as much as they wanted to. So the only thing is, it's just a growth area, it doesn't, doesn't mean that that growth has to occur there.
Right.
As long as you understand that, it's just a designation for the county, the Comprehensive Plan, doesn't mean that that's where, just anybody looking at the plan can say, well, that's, you know, that's where they're trying to direct it.
Yeah.
My opinion is just leave it. It's already a, basically, Yogaville, as well as the Courthouse. That's just my opinion, so I'm open and full for discussion. Census is just to leave it as is?
Okay, very good. All right, so two quick things before I let you go. First of all, next meeting, do we all go ahead and set the May meeting? If we're looking at the third Tuesday, that's going to put you on May twenty-first.
Or May twentieth?
Or Monday, the third Monday, be May twentieth, so I'll refer to the group, of course, on that.
We normally meet on a Monday, if you're correct.
That's correct, Monday, May twentieth, at six P.M. will be the next.
Be May the twentieth?
Uh-huh.
That suit everyone, May twentieth, Monday?
You okay with that, Tyler?
Okay, six o'clock, as usual.
All right, so I don't have, I have only one other thing, so real quick, does the group have anything else before I address the group for a second?
Todd, let me ask you this, because we've gone through Sections three and four, other than the minor changes that George has got, is it your opinion that now for the commission to move that on to the Board of Supervisors?
I would say, once, once we get your concerns squared away, as long as everyone else is fine with what's in there, we could, that could probably be moved along. But I do want, I do want to address your concerns first.
Right, I understand, so we'll do it in May then.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay, real quick, I want to just address the group. Nicky knows this, and Mr. Bigford knows this, I don't think anybody else does. On a personal note, I have accepted a position with Levana County as Director of Planning. My last day with the CRC is going to be a week from tomorrow, April twenty-fourth. I start with Levana County later on in the month. Just want to give you all that heads up. Tyler will be taking the lead on the Buckingham comp plan. Lauren Jones, who has been here before, is going to be backing him up and helping him with it. Lauren helped me with the Charlotte County comp plan, she's been working on this one, so she knows what she's doing. Tyler is coming along pretty quick, he's pretty much hit the ground running with this. So you're, I think you're in very capable hands. I just want to say, this, this. think you're in very capable hands. I just want to say, this, this job opportunity came about very quickly, between deciding to apply for it, interviewing and being offered the job. It was five to six days. It was very quick. I know that some were expecting I was gonna be promoted to Executive Director of the CRC. I will just say that the council is gonna be making an announcement tomorrow morning on that, and that's all I'm gonna say for that. I'll, the only thing I'll add here is that I have really enjoyed working with all the localities in Planning District fourteen, including Buckingham County. I've been doing this twenty and a half years. So this, this is basically, it's a bit of a sea change for me. I'm looking forward to the new opportunity. But I'm gonna be, I'm gonna miss working. And I'll still live in Buckingham. I'm gonna commute across the river. But I'm gonna miss working in the area. And I just want to let you guys know that you're in good hands, and I'm gonna miss working with you guys. It's been a pleasure.
Todd, I'd like to wish you the best of you and your endeavor. Hope that'll work out for you. It's been a pleasure personally to work with you.
Yeah, I've worked with you, what, twenty years? So I think a third time?
Quite a few.
Yeah.
But anyway, thank, I appreciate you telling us that. And we wish you the best.
Thank you. Unless anybody has anything else, I believe we are done, at least for this month.
Commissioners have anything for Todd? Alright, thank you. Thank you so much. Brings us to commission matters and concerns. Do any of the commissioners have anything at this time to talk about, or? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
A motion and second, and a discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. And it's unanimous, Nikki, we are adjourned.